Board meeting to order. Today's March 28, 2022. Sheriff, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the true government of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna move an item up on the agenda here real quick and go just a little bit out of order in order to recognize the Cum Skrals basketball team who are all here to visit with us this evening. Roger?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have this evening's proclamation 2022-01. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Warwick County, Indiana, as the executive branch of county government, desires to recognize the accomplishments of the Tecumseh High School Braves 2021-2022 girls' basketball team. And whereas the Tecumseh High School Braves 21-22 girls' basketball team won the 2022 girls' basketball sectional title. And whereas the team won the 21-22 girls' basketball regional title. And whereas the team won the 21-22 girls' basketball semifinal game, thus advancing to the championship game. And whereas the team won the IHSSAA Class A State Girls Basketball Championship for the first time in school history by defeating the Lafayette Central Catholic Knights 60 to 53. And whereas the team not only demonstrated their superior basketball skills, but also displayed teamwork, fair play, and sportsmanship, culminating in a 21-8 season record and a team member, Ashton Green, being named the winner of the Mental Attitude Award. And whereas the Board of Commissioners wishes to congratulate Principal Jason Fisher, Athletic Director Renee Brown, Assistant Athletic Director Kristen Riddle, Coach Adam Lubehusen, Assistant Coaches George Julian and Sheena Baumgart, the members of the team and the people of the communities of the Tecumseh High School feeder system for this great achievement. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Warwick County, Indiana hereby proclaims March 29, 2022 as Tecumseh High School Girls Basketball Braves Day. Thank you for coming today. And I have the original proclamation either for Principal Fisher or is Coach Lubehusen here?
The girls, we wanted to make the day for tomorrow since it's four o'clock in the afternoon. We wanted to give all day tomorrow for you to celebrate the proclamation. Congratulations once again. Congratulations, Principal Fisher.
Great, great suit.
If you want to have a tremendous amount of fun, you're more than welcome to stick around for the rest. But, but, but you're also welcome to delete. Thank you.
Bye, Braves are coming. Coach Adam.
See y'all. All right.
That was great.
Thank you, Roger.
Yes, thank you, Roger, for reading that. Next order of business is our public hearing in the matter of petition. I'm sorry, this is Molly, right? So this is ATC.
As you would be reading this, it's a, it's a Commissioner's ordinance.
So this is public hearing in the matter of a petition to vacate a portion of public utility and drainage movement along the western edge of lots 9, 10, 11 of Bethany Hills subdivision. amended plat is recorded in plat file 1, card 413 in the office of the Warwick County Recorder, Warwick County, Indiana.
I need to...
Motion to adjourn the meeting and go over the public hearing.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. All right, what do I need to hear, counsel?
Anybody here to speak on behalf of this matter in the public?
Is there anyone here to speak on, in favor of?
Or against?
Or against? I have no one. Okay.
So you need a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene your public meeting?
So moved.
Second?
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. And the next order of business is action on the public hearing in the matter of petition to vacate a portion of a public utility and drainage movement along the western edge of lots 9, 10, and 11 of the Bethany Hills subdivision amended plat is recorded in plat file 1, card 413 in the office of the Warwick County Recorder, Warwick County, Indiana. This will be ordinance 2022.
Dash zero eight.
Dash zero eight.
Yes, sir.
And I will entertain a motion.
Um, yeah, I can add the Drainage Board. They went to them on February 14th, and they gave consent to vacate it. It was advertised in the standard March 10th. Um, and they did have to send notices to the adjacent, everybody in the subdivision, and they did do that. We have the green cards back from that. And we do have letters from the utilities giving of non-objection from Center Point, Indiana American Water, and AT&amp;T.
Very good.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-08.
Second?
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Molly, you're up.
Uh, first item is a request for extension of surety. It's a commercial entrance. And permit number was C-21-081 at 722 South Yanketown Road, Vertical Bridge Holding LLC. We're holding $15,000 in escrow guaranteeing the insurance construction. And they are asking for a one-year extension at the same dollar amount. They've had one year. This surety expires April 19 of 2022. And I believe the county engineer has signed off that the dollar amount is sufficient.
Correct, dollar amount is sufficient.
Molly, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve C-21-081, request for extension of surety.
Second?
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
We have one request for a reduction of surety. It's Pebble Creek Rustume Development LLC by Dr. Mohammed. We're holding a letter of credit totaling $341,987 for street sidewalk and drainage construction. They're asking to reduce the dollar amounts with a one-year extension at 127, 229, and 50 cents. For streets, 94, 440 for sidewalks, and 6,350 for drainage totaling $250,821.45. They have had three years. This letter of credit we're holding expires April 12 of 2022. The county engineer has signed off on the dollar amount for the streets. And the county surveyor signed off on the dollar amount for the drainage.
Okay. Streets and sidewalks are good, Bobby?
Yes, streets and sidewalks, dollar amount is sufficient.
Okay.
Bobby, I got a question. Why wouldn't the drainage already be done for this development?
I think there's just some loose ends to tie it.
Okay. Okay. Did Bob, you already make a motion?
No, sir.
I'll make a motion to request for the reduction of surety for Pebble Creek.
Second?
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
We have a request for release of surety. It's a replat lot 76 Lexington subdivision by Neum Homes LLC. Kush Patel, the owner. We're holding a letter of credit totaling $4,731.30 for sidewalk construction. They're asking to release the letter of credit due to sidewalks no longer being required on the current lots. Um, they went to the area plan commission and asked to not be required to install the sidewalks since this property has changed hands. The lots have changed in size. Now they're large enough that they wouldn't actually trigger a sidewalk requirement anymore. They have been holding this for four years, and this letter of credit, they just posted it. It expires March 27 of 2023.
So Molly, this is the one we, last meeting, we extended for six months?
Yes.
Okay. And so Molly explained to me what's, what's going on here. So the lots are bigger to replat. So I'm, I'm good with it to, to release it. So I'll, I'll make a motion to release the surety. Or I'll make a motion to approve the request, release of surety.
Coach, you missed a good meeting. The, the lots are large enough that they don't actually, they're not required anymore.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Our last one is Gateway Place Section 2 by Herbert Grimm and Robert Grimm, who are the owners. Orthopedic Drive at 450 lineal feet. We're holding $2,769.80. Total 103, 849, 90 in escrow, 104, $19 in a letter of credit. This expires April 15 of 2022. They've only had one year. And it was continued from the March 14 Commissioners Meeting, and it is not done.
There are still signs missing on this when they built the streets. They didn't have us call for an inspection, and we are missing some street compaction tests. And they have cement stabilized the subgrade, I believe.
That's what I was told.
But they have not been able to furnish those test results due to some changes in the contractors, I guess some...
Dylan Merritt with Cash Wagner, I'm gonna state my name. Yeah, I'm dealing with Jim Buckman with Hazec. Hazec's is the gentleman's name and the project manager that was over that job because this was built in September. The dirt work was done in September. Cement stabilization was done in September. And then I believe the roads were paved shortly after. And several people had left that company apparently, and he tried to tidy up the loose ends when this request was made a couple of weeks ago. He furnished, was able to furnish everything but the compaction testing results. And say, Bobby, we talked earlier this morning and basically decided that he wanted to let it set another year, get some construction traffic on it, and make sure it's gonna hold up for that other year and revisit it next March. And hopefully everything holds up and we can get the streets accepted and release the letter of credit at that point. Are we still, we were talking, and Bobby and I, Bobby threw out $40,000 is what he was suggesting to hold on the, the street amount. Is that still accurate?
It's a small portion of street. It's held up to construction that's been going on right now. There may be some things in the future would require construction if the subgrade fails. So I wanted to hold at least 40,000 for this next year.
And drainage is done.
Did you get?
Yes, I spoke to the, the county surveyor today. I wasn't able to sign off, but he said it was done.
Okay, good.
So since it's only been one year, they, we can do this in-house. I'd ask to remove it from the agenda. And then when they're ready, to have them come back once it's all done. The ordinance gives them two years to do streets and drainage.
Counsel, good with that?
That's fine. It sounds like Bobby was recommending all at 40,000 be, is that right?
Yeah, they could have a letter of credit reduced to 40,000 and one additional year to ensure that there's no problems with the street construction.
Do we need to remove it and bring back that new request or just do it now?
No, Molly, it would have all been handled in the office. It wouldn't have come before the Commissioners just to reduce the amount, not until it hit three years.
Reason it was on the agenda, we were hoping to get it accepted. And like I said, we couldn't, the contractor couldn't provide all the information that Bobby was wanting.
It's not an official request for a reduction of surety here. It's just street acceptance, so.
Correct.
I think Molly's probably correct.
Removals, there would be no actions by the Commissioners needed at this point.
All informational?
Okay, yeah, there's no, no action needed. So it can just be, doesn't need to be tabled. Just remove it from the agenda going forward and it'll be revisited in a year.
Thank you.
And you'll make another street acceptance request at that point?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cut off, Molly.
That is all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business is the approval of minutes from our March 14, 2022 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Approve that.
Aye. My motion carries three zero.
Yeah, let's discuss it.
Okay. We've got next the consent agenda, and it sounds like we've got some things we need to consider here, counsel.
Well, before the consent agenda, I have a couple of things to mention.
I'm, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Go ahead.
Uh, first, I'd like to once again state the availability of our voluntary Title VI Public Involvement Survey. Anyone who would wish to help us with our, uh, basically civil rights requests or survey. So the one thing I have listed for discussion is the approval of the vehicle lease and service agreement with Sternberg Advantage Leasing for the Health Department's vehicle. Uh, at your last meeting, you approved the consent agenda, all but that item. And then after the meeting, Dan talked to Aaron, and I think Dan probably changed his mind on that. So we, since it was not approved, it probably should be if that's the board's wishes at this meeting, a motion to approve that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wanting to make a motion. I got, Aaron explained to me what, that, that was being paid for via grant. And that he was obligated by the grant to do some things the way he did it. So. So I make a motion to approve the vehicle lease and service agreement with Sternberg for the Health Department vehicle.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now we have the consent agenda. We've got several items listed. You want me to touch on those or?
Sure.
All right, we have the county auditor claims voucher reports for March 16, uh, March 29. We got that from June on March 23. The payroll date is today. We also got that from Pamela on March 23. Uh, the Ways and Measures Monthly Report for the period February 16 to March 15. We received an email from Ways and Measures Inspector, uh, Mike Arnold on March 15. Emergency purchase of three live pack CR2 AED defibrillators for the Judicial Center Courthouse. Uh, that was to replace some obsolete defibrillators in those buildings, and Sheriff Seaver's handled that for us. Uh, two of these will go in the Judicial Center, the other in the courthouse. The True Green Proposal for 2022 Treatment of Courthouse Lawn. I sent you the quote on March 18, seven applications, total cost $918.75 for this season. We have a fixed asset notification form for the Health Department leased vehicle, which you just approved the lease on. That's the 2022 Chrysler Pacifica van. A couple of Sheriff's vehicles declared surplus status and approval of their fixed asset notification forms, although I have not received those FANS at this time, Mike. So maybe just, uh, it's just for the declaration of surplus, which you've approved. And then the Sheriff's Department Cisco Switches Quote Number 06677 Version 2 from Keller Schrader. Uh, sent that to you March 22. The initial quote is $7,211.82 had been reduced by $1,417.48 to a final cost of $5,794.34.
I'll, I'll make a motion, but I would like to have the True Green Proposal removed for a separate vote, if that's okay, Mr. President.
Right.
So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda based on item D, the True Green Proposal be voted on separately and discussed.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. I think that's all I have.
That's all you have, Roger. You want to go ahead and discuss the True Green Proposal?
Yeah.
Can you?
So the True, uh, proposal for the lawn care services from True Green came in at $131.25 per treatment, seven treatments for a total of $918.75. In the past, that quote, uh, and the standard terms and conditions for True Green has been a one-year agreement for services. This terms and condition is for a three-year agreement with automatically renewal of one-year terms unless canceled in writing prior to 60 days notice. There is an opportunity there for a 5% increase per year for any fuel or, uh, equipment or pesticide increased cost prices on their end that they could increase that by 5% each year at the most.
So, you know, I was, I was good with the one year because that's the way it's been in the past. But somehow it became a three-year agreement. I just want to make sure you guys were aware of that and, uh, because I was not. So.
I was not either.
They typically go up 4% or 5% every year anyway. What was the increase this year, Roger, over last, about 4% or 5%?
Uh, I think that was it. It went, uh, tagged on it. It went up $6, $6.50.
Yeah, six or seven bucks. Yeah. So, um, I, I just, I just want to make sure you guys were, were, you know, there's a cancellation call. I asked Andrew about a cancellation clause that's in there. We just gotta notify him. You know, when we've been unhappy with the service, we've called, they've come out and retreated at no charge. So as long as we're getting that kind of service, I'm, I'm okay with the three-year, as long as we have a right to, uh, you know, exit out of the contract, you know, if we're not happy.
Yeah, I agree.
I apologize for not catching that, Dan. Uh, this year's...
That's the first mistake you've made this year.
That was sent by Anthony Moppet. I don't think he ever sent us one before, so I should have checked that closer, but. And the 5% increase, like you say, that's, that's typical with the other agreements we have. Although some of them are more like 3%.
Right.
Sir?
You good with that? All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the True Green Proposal for 2022 and a three-year agreement.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, sir. It's all I have.
Next item is County Acquisition Administrator, Sherry. There she is.
Sherry Seaver's Warwick County Acquisition Administrator, and this is Mary Lou Parker, and she is our petroleum specialist with Wabash Valley, and that's who we currently have our fuel contract with. Uh, the county fuel contract is up March 31st. Oil prices surging with few signs of slowing down. Brent crude oil is at a global benchmark for energy markets, has surpassed $100 per barrel after Russian President Vladimir Putin ordered an attack on Ukraine February 24, 2022. There is concern this conflict could disrupt energy exports into a global market. Oil is one of the commodities that really feeds into every part of our supply chain and therefore impacts inflation. Joe Grassman and I have discussed the Warwick County Fuel Contract on several occasions. Joe, Joe pointed out, uh, over the years that Warwick County has, um, been in contract with Wabash Valley, uh, that they've built a really good relationship. Joe had mentioned on two occasions, Wabash had locked in a county into a price. Soon after they locked in the price, the fuel dropped, the fuel market dropped significantly. Um, Wabash did let the county out of that contract on two occasions. One year saving the county over $350,000. Uh, the second year saving the county over $150,000. Uh, Wabash, uh, has shown merit and integrity, quite frankly, unprecedented in today's business world. Therefore, it is my recommendation not to put the fuel contract out for bid at this most uncertain time that our country faces. And Mary Lou Parker is here too, if anyone has any questions.
Thank you for meeting with us. Um, I made, I think the Commissioners had these earlier. It basically just, uh, states what we're offering for the contract. It is a different contract than what you've ever been in before due to the market before we've locked a price in for the year. And for your sake and for our sake, that's not something we've wanted to get into with, with you this year. So basically, monthly, we lock in 30% of your usage for the month. So what we normally do, and it's worked good in the past, when our delivery driver comes, if the market price is higher than the contract, he'll use your contract as long as there's contract gallons left. If not, then we will use our market price for gasoline. We're giving you a 10 cents a gallon discount or diesel, 18 cents a gallon discount each time we load. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer what I can. Uh, the contractor in now, you're out of your gasoline and diet fuel. You still have about 1,500 gallons of, uh, clear fuel yet to use, and that ends in March. But I'm sure we won't be able to get that all in this month, but we will go ahead and, uh, use it up for the, in April. So you will get those gallons used up.
Is that the off-road unleaded?
No, it's off-road diesel, clear diesel. Yes, clear diesel. Yeah, your unleaded is used up and your diet fuel is used up. The highway department's the one that will use the, uh, clear.
The off-road.
Okay.
Yeah, the off-road or the on-road, no, yeah.
Or on-road, yeah.
Yeah.
Diet is off.
Right, right.
So Mary Lou, I have one question. When's the gas prices going down?
Well, actually, they, I was gonna tell you, they did go down a little bit today, so I...
I need them about a dollar thirty.
As soon as I invest 100 grain in oil.
Yeah.
Can you do that, Commissioner Johnson?
I was actually looking at, if it's, if they're doing what our buyers are telling us, I'll probably call them in the morning and might want to lock in a few more gallons. I'm done 30%. I'm still not saying lock in a lot, but maybe another 20, 30%.
Get us to 50%.
Yeah, or up to 50, whatever. But yeah, get some, a few more gallons in because with summer coming on and farming is, it's not gonna go down a lot if it goes down. So we're recommending probably to lock in a few more gallons. But I'll know more in the morning when our market prices come out.
Okay. And are you two gonna talk then?
I was gonna call Sherry in the morning and then see how, it's the best way to get together with you guys and see what you want to do.
Perfect.
But I'll let her know either way whether we're recommending or not, so you'll know what's going on.
Appreciate the work that Sherry's done. We appreciate the work that you've done. I've learned a lot, and I know Sherry's learned a lot.
Well, I appreciate you guys sitting, sitting down with us and talking.
We appreciate you and your company.
Well, thank you. Well, if you ever have questions, I'm always available.
I have her number on myself.
Yeah, he does. He does, yeah.
So you...
And Roger Ratliff, our petroleum driver, is very knowledgeable too. So if you can't get me, you can get Roger.
Great team.
Anytime, yeah.
So you don't need any action here, right? Just, just a presentation? Or did we?
Mr. President, there is, we have drafted a two-page contract for this agreement. It references the quote that was just handed out and, and just incorporates the terms of this quote into the contract that you would, uh, agree to today, if that's what you so wish.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll, I'll make that motion to renew a, a 2022 contract renewal with Wabash Valley.
Second?
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Thank you, Sherry. Oh, you're still up.
Yeah. And Commissioner Saylor, I just want to say thank you for, um, helping me on that contract too. I appreciate all of your knowledge.
You're welcome. You're a fast learner.
I appreciate that.
It's taken me five or six years to learn the fuel business.
And, um, are we ready for the next order?
Yes.
President, okay. Uh, the next order, I believe, is the Belle Road Mowing Retention Basin area.
Is this an update I've got?
So, um, Bobby Howard asked me to, uh, get some bids, uh, to mow the two-acre area that there's a retention pond lake on the corner of Van Road and Bell Road. And I did go to three Warwick County companies. Uh, everybody's very close on price. There, it's gonna take a total of sixteen cuts to go through. Uh, Bobby had asked until the end of October. So ATC Lawn Pros came in at, uh, three hundred and fifty, uh, each time that they mow and trim, uh, which would be a total fifty-six hundred. Uh, Michael Couch Landscaping, three hundred and fifty each time, again, fifty-six hundred. And then Supercuts, uh, Lawn Care, three hundred and twenty-five coming in at fifty-two hundred.
Sherry, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Does this mowing agreement go to the road edge, curb edge of the road?
That's my understanding. Am I correct on that, Bobby?
Yeah, they should, they should be doing all of it.
And does this include weeding, weed eating every time? And, you know, we talked about a, are, are we putting up a, uh, protection?
Yes.
So does that include weed, once that gets up? Is that gonna be put up this year? And if it is, does that include weeding around it?
I don't see weed eating and supercut.
Basically says area trimming to cut, trim around the areas lawn not reachable with other mowing equipment.
So Sherry, I didn't know if you.
I don't know if we told them about the guard rail.
Yeah, there's gonna be a guard rail go up, and, and I have a pet peeve about a lot of guard rails around our community that there's weeds growing up uh, uh, around them, and just long as that, you know, that gets cut, that's all I, that's all I have.
When is that going up, Commissioner Saylor?
I don't know. Bobby, do you know?
Is it probably, we haven't closed out the Belrod contract yet. Once that happens, then we can.
Could be later on in a year, probably.
Yeah, I mean, June, July.
Okay, and, and I can reach out to them and, and make sure they specify that and that they're clear on that.
Yeah, I, I would.
The two for three fifty say that it, they've got trimming in there, but the lower one doesn't.
Low cost being, doesn't have anything about trimming.
It says mowing every other week, April first, October thirty-first.
In all of our, uh, verbal discussions and my noted emails, it did, it did include trimming.
Okay.
But I do have just one question for Attorney Skinner on that. Since the county doesn't actually own that property on the certificates of insurance, do we need to name the Crager family also?
That would be best practice, yes.
Okay, so does it need to be for the certificate holder, Warwick County, and the Crager family are just the property owner?
We're contracting the word.
Uh, certificate of liability insurance.
We definitely need to be on there.
Okay, so.
The county does.
Okay, so both then need to be on there?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm okay with approving the supercuts as long as Sherry confirms with them that if there's some kind of road protection device that goes up there that they're willing to just weed eat around that.
Okay.
Can, is that good, Sherry?
And I can get, I can get confirmation first thing in the morning for you.
And email would be preferred.
Okay, okay.
No bump?
I'm just in shock, that's all. Go ahead.
Me too.
I'll throw this out there. I don't know. Um, economic development, I think contracts for the mowing along Warwick Trail.
Mm-hmm. With who, Bobby?
I don't believe it's any of these three companies. I don't think. We might want to check.
Do you want, do you want to table this and, and have Sherry reach out to Steve and see?
Just to see who they use. It might be Colonial. They were close, close by.
Can, can you do that, Sherry?
And I've, I've talked, uh, to JT at Colonial.
Okay.
And he says the profit that he makes on mowing, and as busy as they are with his landscaping, he opted not to because I, I went directly there to talk to him in person.
Is that who does the trail?
JT does, yes, I believe so.
Okay, okay.
But, but I'm happy, uh, to reach out to Steve on that if you like.
No, I mean, you talk to him, and that's who does it, and that's what we need to know. Thank you. So.
He has a little goodwill pricing there too.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm, I'm willing to go with the, the, the supercuts, the lowest bidder, as long as it includes, uh, any additional protection, uh, retention device put up to keep cars from, going, bearing off into the retention basin. And, and that's being confirmed in writing, Sherry.
I'll get that confirmed tomorrow morning in writing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aight.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Sherry.
Is that all?
Thank you, Sherry.
All right, next order of business is our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item I have on the agenda for today is, uh, the interlocal agreement between the county and the Ohio Township, uh, trustee. Well, trustee on behalf of Ohio Township. You are aware, there was a disaster relief building that was constructed on Ohio Township property in Newburgh, and, uh, this agreement is an interlocal agreement between the township and the county as to, uh, maintenance of that building and payment of various costs, uh, utilities, insurance, and that sort of thing for the building. Um, it's been reviewed by, uh, prepared by us, reviewed by us, and also by the Ohio Township trustee's attorney. And they've made some suggestions which we have, uh, incorporated. The only suggestion that you may not be aware of, um, that was incorporated, uh, today was in paragraph six. We had initially drafted this, that Ohio Township would be responsible for provision of and maintenance of the backup generators and pest control services, and the, uh, Ohio Township said they thought that that was going to be the county's responsibility. Uh, so we've updated that to be the county's responsibility for maintaining that generator, backup generators and the pest control for the building. Uh, but they are still going to maintain the fire and, uh, fire alarm and security alarm monitoring services portion of that building. If you have any questions, I'm happy to, uh, try and answer those. This has been, um, tabled a couple of times, but we were working on trying to get a response back from Township, um, on the terms of this, but, uh, I think we are all in order now, uh, unless you have any comments.
Dan, is this generator something that we should put, or, excuse me? Routine maintenance?
Yeah, and I think that's the reason why we took that item, because we currently have a contract with Evapar in, in maintenance of, of ours, and adding that to it, we, we tried to split, you know, some of the responsibilities, uh, in, in there. You know, there's, there's, there's an alarm service in there, and there's also video surveillance in that building. And so that's monitored each month because of the, uh, the inventory, and so.
I was aware of the generators and the pest control services certainly makes sense with their contract that they have.
I think we've already got the pest control covered with Aireb.
Yeah.
Our facility, our D facility.
This contract addresses, you know, access to the property, who's, who is gonna be allowed access, um, unrestricted access, you know, EMS, of course, uh, as well as fire department and the trustee's office and the commissioners and, uh, you know, various, emergency management agency, a lot of different, you know, who's gonna be allowed access and then various other terms that.
And again, I know probably Terry might know this, but Bob, Bob, I, I worked with Chad and Jake, um, on access just because of, again, the inventory of what's in there, and we, we just feel that there didn't need to be a lot of access to that.
There doesn't.
And so.
This is better.
Yeah, so it's, it's basically the, uh, the three commissioners, um, uh, then Jake, the EMA staff.
There's three.
And, um, yeah, it's, it's right there, and then, yeah, the trustee, the, the chief deputy trustee, the advisory board president, and the chief of the Ohio Township Fire Department, so it's, it's, uh.
It makes sense.
Yeah, we just didn't want, if, if any of our maintenance people need to get in there, we felt like that somebody on this here would be with them, just because of the inventory.
Right.
There is a EMS area, um, that EMS does have separate access to.
It's carded separately, right?
Yes, yeah.
I'm good with it.
So the county portion, is that a different key or was it key to our masters?
No, that's a separate key. That's a separate key, and, uh, do you have a fob, Bob? You, you can put, you can put your ID card. We can get you if you're not on that. We can get that added, you, added to the, uh, the fob with, with your ID card.
Access control.
Yeah, access control, I'm sorry.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve it?
Make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between Ohio Township and Warwick County.
May I will second that?
First and a second all in favor.
Aight.
My motion carries three zero. Finally got that one knocked out.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Let's see here. Next item of business is our county highway superintendent engineer, Bobby Howard.
I have one item tonight. It is, um, in keeping with our capital improvement plan, moving forward with our, uh, road widening and, and safety improvements. Epporth Road was recently awarded construction funding from State Road sixty-six south to State Road six sixty-two. We have, uh, went through a consultant selection procedure, and Lockmueller Group was the highest scoring. And now we have a contract with Lockmueller Group tonight to do the preliminary engineering and right-of-way services for this portion of Epporth Road and for a cost not to exceed one million four hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. At this time, uh, federal funding on the engineering, uh, is not available through the NPO, which was known. But if it becomes available, then, uh, we are, uh, in line to, to receive it. So it, it would also pay anything that we've, or reimburse anything that we've already spent.
So where's the one point four coming from, Bobby?
Uh, this is from our lit tax, Epporth Road. And as Bell Road is finished out, the surplus from Bell Road is gonna be transferred to the Epporth Road.
How much is that? Roughly, how much is that surplus?
Uh, that's one point one million.
Bobby, does any of the, uh, uh, TIF, uh, monies come into play here for that road, the improvement of that road? Is that, that's in the TIF district, right?
It is in the TIF district. I have not asked for any funding through the TIF. My, my understanding is that that funding is all, uh.
Allocated.
Allocated to other purposes, so, but this is just through our federally grant program.
Well, the, the only thing I ask, if, if, if we can't get reimbursement, maybe we ask Steve if there's any money available to help share some cost of this.
That's a possibility.
Yeah, you know, I know that can be at a later date.
Sure helps when you have one point one million in surplus from prior projects.
It sure does, and that's a testament to Bobby and his management of the, those dollars. Thank you, Bobby.
Well, he also, the NPO came through on that and helped with some.
Previous.
Yes, so they had funding that became available, just like in this case, that they were able to allocate toward our projects.
I know you don't have a crystal ball, but you anticipate that happening.
I'm hoping so, yes. There's been some discussion of it, so.
And again, you gotta give credit to Bobby. He's the one who has the relationship with them. I know I'm on the board, but it's, I'm not gonna take credit for that. That's Bobby and his relationship with NPOs.
Yep.
Thank you, Bobby.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the Epporth Design Contract with Lockmueller.
I'll second to that.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aight.
My motion carries three zero. Is that all, Bobby?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, Sheriff.
Sheriff Mike Wilder. Uh, I'm here in front of you today to approve Wright Soft, Wright Stuff Software. It's a timekeeping management software. Uh, I've sat down with the auditor, uh, myself and Chief Deputy Paul Cruz have sat through some demonstrations by Wright Stuff, and I believe that one was advanced time. Uh, we believe that this one here would suit our needs best, and this is what we chose. Uh, as I said, we spoke with auditor, and she agreed that, that they could accommodate this software. We're kind of the guinea pigs, but we're looking forward to it. As, as you know, we have almost a hundred employees out there. Almost every, uh, employee is paid at a different pay rate depending what shift they work and different things. It's a very long, time-consuming to do payroll every two weeks. So we're looking forward to trying to do this, uh, computerized software for our timekeeping. And, uh, it is in our budget through the lit tax, so there's no fund, the funding's there. It's just we need your approval to sign contracts.
Auditor Stevens, does this software integrate with your low software to minimize effort in your office?
That's a good question. Um, it will, and we, we will have support of our, um, payroll vendor to help make it work. It's not their preferred vendor, but, uh, other counties use Wright Stuff along with the, the low payroll in financials, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And I want to say I appreciate, um, Chief Cruz and Sheriff Wilder. We've, we've had numerous conversations. They've definitely done their due diligence visiting other counties and, and making sure that it's going to be good for them as well as good for the county. Hopefully later, more, more employees coming on.
Sheriff, what's the dollar value of the contract roughly?
I don't have it in front of me. Uh, the first six months, they're actually giving us free trial. There's no obligation, but I don't have the, I apologize. I don't know. I, I don't think we've seen it, Sheriff Wilder. Okay, I can get it to you. I thought you guys had that. It's under the, what our budget is, but, uh, I'll get it to you, see that, uh.
I like the six months free part.
Yeah, and, and there's a lot of trial. They gotta build, build it, and I don't know if Debbie understands. You know, we, it'll take us probably several months before we're actually up and fully utilizing it, uh, because to build out all the different things and then run it through its test runs versus the paper, make sure they both work. So it'll be several months before we're actually up and fully operational with it. You know, then, and then it's, you know, at that point, if other office heads want it, you know, it'd be an option for them, or if they don't, you know, I mean, we are the most, I think, at least I think Debbie understands too, are probably the most complex pay of all the office heads, just because of all, like I said, all the different entities within the sheriff's office and the different pay structures for each employee.
So can we approve this based on, and, and re-review?
Yes, again, yeah.
It's under their budget. Make a motion to approve the agreement with Wright Stuff Software for the sheriff's office.
Based on council review of the contract?
Yes.
Second?
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aight.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you all, and I'll send that over. Make sure you guys have a copy tomorrow, Andrew. I thought you guys, I thought we'd sent it, so I wasn't going last week.
If, if you sent it, it just got missed in, in there, but, uh, if you wouldn't mind sending it again.
Yeah, I'll do it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Sheriff, Sheriff, there's, do you have one other item? Or is that part of the same thing?
That's both, yeah, that's both.
Okay, got it, thank you.
All right.
Mister?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Philpe, I have nothing.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aight.
My motion carries three zero.
Four forty-nine, Christine.